This is my commission meeting via Zoom. This meeting is being recorded. It's Tuesday, April 14th, 2021 at 8:00 PM. Can I have a roll call, please? Rick Cott?
Here.
Rich Hartman is excused. Tanya Roberts?
Here.
Eleanor Gorman?
Yes.
Richard Will?
Here.
Patrick Brunstein?
Here.
Can I have a motion to excuse Rich Hartman? He's traveling.
I move to excuse Rich Hartman.
Second?
Second. Second. Greg, second.
Okay. I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda.
Second, or approve? Motion.
So I think that Greg made the motion to approve it. I'll second the motion. This is Richard.
Okay.
Thank you, Richard.
Hey, I have a motion approved minutes of March 23rd, 2021.
Move.
Richard, I move that we approve the March 2021 minutes.
Second, Greg.
Okay, so move.
And I'll add, I'll add, these are the best minutes I have ever read. Thank you, Tanya.
Ah, well, that's what Tanya did.
Okay, so do we have any public comment?
I did not receive any written comment. However, we do have citizens on the line. Marlene Penry, do you have a public comment?
Yes, I do.
Okay, go ahead.
Big surprise, right, people? Two things. One, you've been talking about meeting in person and it sounds like we're heading that way with Phase Three. And you've mentioned a couple of times, meeting at OIA. And if I recall, that's a second floor room with no ADA access. And so I don't know. I don't know that you can hold a city public meeting in a room that doesn't have ADA access. My second item is just, I guess I really need to recap to understand what happened with the clearing ordinance. Even though you thought it needed some tweaks, since it wasn't being enforced, you didn't move forward with any tweaks. And so did you just send that back to the mayor and say enforce it as is? Or, or what? Are you going to make a presentation to the city council? I guess I was just confused on what the final status of that subject was. Thank you.
Okay, the next citizen I have is Ann Reese. Ann, do you have a public comment?
No, I have no comment at this time. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next would be Dawn Williams. Dawn, do you have a public comment?
No, I don't. I hope you can hear me. I'm on an iPad.
Yep, we can hear you. Thank you. And that concludes public comment.
Okay, we normally don't respond to public comments, but just to make sure everyone in the planning commission knows, I did send the ordinance back to the mayor and said, we did not find anything to do to improve it at this point. But what was lacking was the enforcement of the ordinance. And once they did that. That's what we did with that. Make sure everybody knows we did that. Okay, we're building standards. I'm not sure, Dan, are you going to lead this or?
Tanya is the lead. She has done a remarkable job of prep on this. We did a field trip that she's indicated what the results were. So, Tanya, it's your ball.
Okay, thank you, Greg and Dan. So, did you all get a chance to review that brief I sent out last week?
I did.
Yes.
Yeah, okay, so let me know if you did not, so that we're not, so that we can catch you up. But anyhow, so we did a little survey. Pat, Greg and I drove around and looked at a neighborhood. And the results of the survey were in the brief. Essentially, we were just looking at which kinds of homes, I'm specifically counting manufactured homes, and assessing if they appeared to conform to the neighborhood or not. The majority of them did not conform, however, some did. And on location wise, we also tallied whether they were on the waterfront or not. And there were quite a few in the small neighborhood that we looked at. And a lot of them were actually on the waterfront. So that is more concerning in the regard of just looking at property values and the idea that a conforming neighborhood has a higher property value. So the impact to property owners for a non-conforming structure is going to be higher, the higher the value of their home is, right? So if you've got two really nice homes and then you've got a non-conforming home in the middle of them, that lowers the property value for both of those homes quite a bit. So that's why that is relevant. And then Pat was given a link to some research that's been done by the municipal research service center. And they had a nice article that talked about building design standards around Washington State. And I did a little brief summary of that. So I hope you all had a chance to look at that. And we can certainly dig into more detail into any specific design standards that you want. But I think the big takeaway from that brief that the MSRC put together is that they're completely legal and they're a good idea. Most communities have some sort of design standard. And a community's right to have them has been upheld legally by the hearings examiner. So we are totally okay to create some standards.
I have a question first, then I'll get down. Just so I, just so I understand roof pit. Pat, what is my roof pitch on my house?
Your pitch is 612.
612, okay. So what's a, what's a standard manufactured home?
312.
312.
So just so everybody knows how roof pitches work. So for every 12 inches that it goes out the pitch, so if it goes out 12 inches and it's a 312, that means it goes up three inches. So it goes horizontal 12 and vertical 3. So if you draw a little triangle or trajectory, if you do your geometry, that's, that's, that's how it works.
It's important for Greg, we're eliminating manufactured homes.
I can't hear you. I can't hear you, Dan.
Okay, I'll repeat that for Greg. So by doing the 412 roof pitch, we eliminate manufactured homes?
No, that's not true. That's not true. That's what we need to talk about is that many municipalities have specific guidelines for manufactured homes. And so it appears in the state of Washington that that's okay to do that. We haven't done enough research yet between Pat and Tanya and I to find those kinds of specifications. But it is apparently permissible for a municipality to have manufactured home specific specifications. Now, and we're not doing that to discourage manufactured homes. We're trying to make them, as Tanya's report indicates, you know, consistent with neighborhood designs. And you can, we could specify a 612 on a manufactured home. And Ann Reese indicated last, at our last meeting, that the manufactured home industry has really stepped up to the plate. And apparently, you know, it's just like going to buy a new car. You can buy a cheap commuter or you can buy a Cadillac Escalade. And that's true in the manufactured home industry as well. And in our review, our field trip, we found some, you know, some very impressive manufactured homes that had steeper roof pitches. We also found kind of the standard 312s most of the time. And generally, they didn't fit with the adjoining neighborhood.
Eleanor? Eleanor?
While we're talking about design standards, I'm not sure if this fits under, under that heading. But what I've noticed is two and three and four outbuildings, whether they be sheds or greenhouses in front of the houses at the street, frequently fall. And I called and asked, is there any limit? And there is no limit to how many sheds or greenhouses you can put out in front of your home. I think that's something we should look at.
Okay. Richard?
So I want to understand more about roof pitches. And it's my understanding that in snow country, a steeper roof pitch is desirable because it helps the roof shed the snow, which reduces the load bearing on the roof. What's the advantage of a steeper roof pitch in ocean shores? We don't have snow. And, and so why would we advocate for a steeper roof pitch? I'm asking.
I probably can answer that if you want. The steeper the roof pitch, the harder it is for the manufactured home to be transported into anywhere. Because the 312, a typical manufactured home comes in 12-foot wide or 14-foot wide sections. So if you go much higher than a 4 or 312 pitch, it has, they actually have to bring the roof in separately and attach it in the field because it won't fit under bridges, power lines, stuff like that. And that's why manufactured homes have historically stayed with a 312 or less pitch roof. It's also, it's also the reason that they don't have wide overhangs is because there's width limits when they're transporting those things down the road.
Richard?
So as I read some of, some information on the MRSC website, to some degree, what I read conformed to what Greg said, that you can do some building standards on manufactured homes. But if the intent of your building standard is to exclude manufacturer homes, we are violating the Supreme Court ruling, as I understand it. And what I just heard Pat said is that if we demand a 412 roof pitch, so far, the only reason I understand to do that is to make it more difficult for somebody to buy and more difficult or more expensive, which means more difficult to bring in a manufactured home. And, and I'm not sure that that serves the public very well. So I'm, I'm struggling with this just a little bit and I'm hoping for somebody to enlighten me.
So, so it's not that we're trying to restrict manufactured homes. The idea is, is to make them so they look more like a normal built home. So that when they come into a neighborhood, that they're, they're aesthetically looking like a stick-built home, the same type of overhangs, the same type of roof pitches, covered porches, that type of thing. It's not that we don't want them because we can't not want them. It's that we want them to look better than a lot of them do.
Richard?
So there's, there's a fine line. It, it seems to me that there's a fine line between what Pat just said. And if I get this right, is it CNRs or DCNRs? What are they called when, when you move into a neighborhood and they have, they have specific restrictions? You have to cut your grass eight and three and three quarters inches long and it can't exceed three and, and.
And those are called, those are called CCNRs.
CCNRs. And, and it sounds to me that, that this is getting really darned close to enforcing a version of CCNR. And again, I'm, I'm looking for enlightenment.
Eleanor?
Some standards would make them more acceptable in neighborhoods. And I will give you an example of someone I know who lives on Sunrise with a group of extremely expensive houses. And someone brought in a modular that was definitely on the cheap side. And it looks out of place and they claim it's devaluing their property. I think it would be better if people were encouraged to put in a better modular home where they would be more accepted in the neighborhood and keep the values of the property in place. I think consistency in the neighborhood is important.
I have a question on whether the criteria was more than one roof line peak. Why do we have that as part of the criteria? Tanya?
So that was not a criteria. That was something that I observed when we did our field trip, that properties that had more than one roof peak seemed to be more attractive and feel more like a real home. Right? So that doesn't mean that everyone else agreed with me. But that's something that I noticed, that the homes that looked to be more conforming tended to have more than one roof line.
When I saw that, I look at Lake and I count 11 houses with one, one roof pit. And two of them are brand new.
Sure.
So I don't think we could use that as a standard. Pat?
You got to keep in mind that this isn't a standard just for manufactured homes. This is a building, a design standard. It applies to houses as well. So, you know, if we, I think our goal here is to try and make ocean shores look better. And so given that, these standards need to not only apply to manufactured homes, but also stick-built homes.
Yeah. Let me add something here, though. This is Greg. I'm sorry, I can't see you and I can't raise my hand.
We can see your.
Well, the point is, is that Pat and I and Tanya talked about this in our field trip. Whether we come up with specifications specifically for manufactured homes appears to be our prerogative. We looked and Pat showed us some fine examples of modern homes that have 312 pitches. But they're, you know, these are $750,000 homes. What we're trying to do is make ocean shores attractive for people's investments, whether they're going to live here year-round or whether they're going to buy here for vacation or seasonal property. And so we need to do some more research about to what extent is the city council willing to come up with specifications specifically for modular home or for manufactured homes? Because apparently, it's, it's appropriate or legal to do that. But, and not necessarily create a universal design standard that says nobody can put in a, a house in ocean shores that's got a 312 pitch. So that's something that we're going to have to do some more research on and try to figure out what, where does the city council want to go with this? Apparently, we can write specifications specifically for manufactured homes. Or we could adopt what you might call universal design standards that apply to everybody. We need to decide what, which side of that fence we want to be on and, and what we do next.
I think we would want to do both and really look at what specifically about manufactured homes we would want to regulate separately. So I, I mean, there's a lot of not desirable stick-built homes as well. You know, we saw some pretty non-conforming stick-built homes out there also.
Eleanor?
I think we need to get some guidance from the council. There's no point in going ahead and spending a whole lot of time working on something that they're going to say, well, we don't want to go there. We don't want to respect it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I think Eleanor is right. And I think maybe it would be productive to decide what information we need to have, what research needs to be done in order to present something meaningful to the council.
Anybody else?
I'll add, I was kind of thinking Pat was going to chime in here. After our field trip, we talked about what are our next steps? And Tanya kind of reviewed that already. What we're proposing is that we actually find, just kind of like we've done in the past. We're not going to reinvent the wheel here. Go out and try to find a set of ordinances that other cities have adopted specifically for manufactured homes and for design standards that are considered universal standards, which Tanya has already shared with her MSBR or whatever that is. Sorry, I always mangled the acronym. But she, she shared with us design standards that apply to entire municipalities. So we need to do a little bit more research about what other ordinances are out, are in existence today that are specific to manufactured homes and then bring that back to the planning commission. And at that time, we think we've done enough homework where we can possibly engage the mayor or the city council about which, how would they prefer to go? Do they want to do a citywide standard? Or do they want to do, like Tanya said, both? Citywide standard and manufactured home standards? That would, personally, that's where I'm at. I think that we're, we're trying to essentially improve the marketability of ocean shores. We have 5,000 empty lots in this town that sell for ridiculously low prices. And I mean, we're enjoying an incredible building boom right now. And to the extent that they're frankly stick-built homes, I've got one going in right across the street from me. I was thrilled that it wasn't multifamily and thrilled that it's a stick-built home. My worst fear, frankly, is somebody's going to put a mobile home next door to me and it's, it's the same reaction that the people have all over the city. It effectively reduces the resale on their property.
Richard? You're muted, Richard.
There, sorry. I'd like to take just a moment and read from RCW 35 dot 21 dot 684, which is the authority to regulate placement or use of homes, regulation of manufactured homes, issuance of permits, restrictions on location of manufactured mobile homes and entry or removal of recreational vehicles used as primary residences. And it goes on to say, and this is really very short, "A city or town may not adopt an ordinance that has the effect directly or indirectly of discriminating against consumers' choices in the placement or use of a home in such a manner that is not equally applicable for all homes. Homes built to 42 U.S.C. Section 5401, blah, 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 standards as amended in 2000 must be regulated for the purpose of citing in the same manner as site-built homes, factory-built homes, or homes built to any other state or state construction or local design standard. However, except as provision in subsection two of this section, any city or town may require that a manufactured home be a new manufactured home, the manufactured home be set upon a permanent foundation as specified by the manufacturer and that the space from the bottom of the home to the crown be enclosed by concrete or an approved concrete product, which can be either load-bearing or decorative, that the manufactured home comply with all local design standards applicable to all other homes within the day it would, in which the manufactured home is being located. The home be is thermally equivalent to the state energy code. And finally, the manufactured home otherwise meets all requirements for designated manufactured home as designed, as defined in RCW 35 dot 63 dot 160." So what I think I just, the way I interpret what I just read is that we cannot create a manufactured home specific criteria, that the criteria has to apply to all of the homes. And the most applicable element that I think I just read is that the manufactured home needs to comply with the other homes in that neighborhood. And I think that that's the direction that I think is most logical and most fair to the person who wants to move into ocean shores.
Any comments?
I think the question that we're trying to get at is how can we create some design standards that ensure a more unified, beautiful aesthetic in this town? So the question is just, what, what can we actually specify and how, how to do it?
So who do?
Pat first. Pat?
I guess what I would really like to know is how far can you go legally with this? I hate to do a whole bunch of work on this thing and then have it shot down by the city attorney or by anybody. I really think there, there is very specific law that we can't discriminate against these kind of homes. But I, I think we really need to determine, to determine what our boundaries are, what we can and can't do. And again, we cannot legally eliminate manufactured homes. We can't. And I don't believe we can do design standards that will eliminate manufactured homes. I don't think federal law will allow it.
Hey, Richard?
So I agree with what Pat just said. And, and, and that brings the question that I am hoping we can find an answer to, is who do we go to to say just what kind of standards we can legally impose? And I'm wondering if it's appropriate, Dan, for you to contact the mayor for permission to contact the attorney to get some guidance, if that sounds appropriate. Because again, what's already been discussed, spending a lot of time going down a road that has no future, this just doesn't make sense. So what can we do or not do and conform to state and federal law?
I think that we should start with the MRSC and actually ask them that question and see what they come up with before we talk to the attorney.
I agree.
Hey, anybody else?
Well, if I can, it's Greg. Reiterate what has already been said. From the get-go, I have tried to remind everybody of what Linda Witcher told us four years ago, that we cannot, cannot exclude manufactured homes. And that's not what I'm trying, that's not what we're trying to do here. We're simply trying to make manufactured homes conform with the neighborhood standards so that we do everything we can to preserve and encourage the neighborhood aesthetics that will help us sell 5,000 empty lots in this town so that we will finally have all the developable space that already has the infrastructure under it paid for by more people than the 6,000 people who live here.
Richard?
I'm done.
So, Greg, I hear what you're saying, and, and again, it sounds to me that the, the biggest fault room that the city has to, to create compliance is that manufactured homes and all new construction conforms to the existing neighborhood. And then I go back to Tanya's table one, and of the 15 homes inspected, that, that 10 of them, five were conforming and 10 were non-conforming, if I, if I read this correctly. And so, so how do we enforce or create an ordinance that applies to only new construction when the house right next door to me, that I'm building my new house, a non-conforming home? Where does that line, what creates that line? Where does that line come into play? And on the other hand, that at some point, you know, you've got to say, this is enough, and these are the new standards, and how do we do that equitably?
So, so on the MRCS website, it says, nevertheless, cities and counties may, under this legislate, legislation, require that these manufactured homes, one, be new manufactured homes, so we can require that, two, be set on a permanent foundation, three, comply, and this is the big one right here, three, comply with any local design standards that may apply to all other homes in the neighborhood in which the manufactured homes is to be located. And that's why I say we need to do design standards for all housing. So that's, that's how we, that's how we set it up, is we have to do a design standard that affects all residential building. So if part of that design standard is 42 pitch, two-foot overhangs or 12-inch overhangs, then it has to apply to all residential building, not just manufactured homes. We can't single them out.
So can I add to that? This is Greg. I'm more than willing to go down that, that, that path. But it probably means that we're going to abandon the pitch standard to allow for, you know, lower pitched houses. But the, the nuance in this is, there's a line in that, in that code that says conformity with the neighborhood. And I wish the rest of you could have seen what we saw on the field trip. I came away from the field trip thinking that, oh my goodness, I should thank, thank God above that I am not suffering from some of the outrageous situations that do occur in Ocean Shores, where you've got somebody who has literally put nothing but a glorified double wide in between two $750,000 homes on the bay. And that's not the only example. We saw other examples, and as Pat said, we also have derelict properties that are a problem, but we're dealing with manufactured homes right now. And we can, it's, 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 I mean, we, we agreed not to show any pictures, but this kind of situation should not be happening in Ocean Shores or any other community. Richard asked about CCNRs. Well, you know, we all are going to avoid CCNRs, even though in effect, by adopting some universal building standards or design standards, not building standards, we are in effect placing some limits on what you can put into Ocean Shores. I think there's no question, at least from my perspective, we would really prefer stick-built homes, but we can't specify that at the exclusion of manufactured homes. And again, I, I want to reference what Ann Reese said last time. In the manufactured home business today, there are Cadillac versions of manufactured homes, and the only reason they're not showing up here is because we allow the Volkswagens. And we saw some Volkswagens in the middle of Cadillacs that are not doing this, this city any good. I mean, they're, they're, they're an albatross. They, they are effectively reducing property values, they're reducing people who come into the city wanting to live or buy here because they get the impression that the city just doesn't care. And this whole issue over manufactured homes is just one of many issues that we have fortunately been charged to respond to, but the vegetative clearing, revitalization of the downtown are all issues that I think are particularly important for the planning commission to focus on if we want to make Ocean Shores the economic powerhouse that it should be.
I have a couple of comments because we, we've got, I think, Pat, you said your house is a 312 pitch. I, I, there are, I think there's other things we could do than worry about the pitch of a roof, to have a nice design standard so when the house fits in next door. You can't say it's okay for the, for the houses that are ultra-moderating and expensive, they can have a 312 pitch, and then come back and say, well, the rest of you can't. So I think if we focus on things that make a house aesthetically more pleasing, and, and I agree with the boxes that are, some of the boxes that are going in at this door, I mean, there's no question about it, but I also see some, some manufactured homes are very nice, and they wouldn't bother me to be next to me if one of those were, you know, one guy in Duck Lake Drive, he even put an attached garage to his, to his manufactured home. Looks absolutely fantastic. So I think the design standards we need to look at is how do we make the houses look good other than just the box?
Any comments? Richard? You're muted, Richard.
I, I hear what you're saying, and I agree with what you're saying, and I go back a little bit to what Pat reiterated after I read the, the RCW, and in both cases, we're both saying the same thing, that the focus is design standards, and I'm a lot more comfortable if we're establishing design standards for all new construction and not trying to create design standards specifically for manufactured homes. I think we're in violation of the regulation when we focus on manufactured rather than on all homes. So then the question that, that rises in my mind as we have this discussion, so Frank Lloyd Wright reincarnates and comes and builds a $2 million house on the bayfront, it doesn't conform to the rest of the neighborhood, how come he can't? And I can't put in my double wide. They're both non-conforming, and so how does that, how does that play out? And I understand the, the objective here, but how, you know, first, who decides what's an acceptable conforming and what's unconceptible? I built a yurt for, for a client, and I like yurts. I, I, I think yurts are great, but I think I may be the only one in this meeting right here that wouldn't care if a yurt went up next door to me. So I'm an exception perhaps, but the point is, is, is who's going to implement those standards? So.
Not me.
So, so, so those, those are questions that I think, I think bear discussion. And, and my big point is rather than focus on manufactured homes, I feel much more comfortable focusing on design standards for all new construction, and then the side issue I already said is, is who decides what those standards are and who enforces those standards?
Pat? I, I agree. And as I have been researching this, there is, the other municipalities actually have review committee that was part of the permit process that does design reviews. I think it would be our job to come up with what that, what their criteria of that design committee review board or whatever it is, would, would have to look at and enforce, and it does have to apply to all, all residential construction, not just manufactured homes.
Anybody else?
Well, I'll chime in and endorse what Pat just said and what Richard said. If, if that's what we choose to do, then let's, let's just drop the whole issue about roof pitch. We need to come up with some kind of measurable, objective standards that either the city council or a special design group utilizes to determine whether what's being built in Ocean Shores is acceptable or not. We've talked about this before, we got into the same kind of weedy area last time when we were talking about vegetation, and I brought up that in the comp plan, in the new comp plan, we had referenced the possibility of a architectural design, a volunteer organ, you know, residential group that would serve that purpose. I said at the time that personally that doesn't sound very attractive to me. I'm sure it probably terrorizes the building industry to say that, that the city of Ocean Shores is going to come up with this new design review committee that, that ends up talking about the, speaking to the design of the building as well as what's going to happen with vegetation. And, you know, I'm reluctantly willing to say, okay, if that's what it's going to take, let's put some specifications for this architectural design review committee that we referenced in the comp plan to deal with these kinds of sort of subjective, it's kind of squishy, objectives, subjective kinds of standards to help the city council determine what can and can't be built. Again, from a administrative standpoint, it sounds like a horror story to me. It's not something that I would prefer to do. What I'd prefer to do is simply stick to something that are measurable standards. And, you know, we didn't go off the charts on this manufactured home issue. We simply, at least I focused on, and Jeff Daniels focused on, three things. The foundation, the eaves, the porches, and the roof pitch, four things. And we thought that that would be simple enough to help bring manufactured homes into conformance with most of the neighborhoods in the city of Ocean Shores. And so I'm, I'm still not convinced, given what other municipalities have done specifically for, about manufactured homes, that that is not within our purview. So, Richard, I do disagree with your interpretation of what you read. I think it actually, I think the words in that actually do give us authority to have special provisions. For heaven's sakes, we have four special provisions in the existing code for manufactured homes, depending on which zone you're in, but they're not terribly specific. I mean, it really comes down to can you put a single wide in or a double wide? And that, I think we're, we have basically given you a report that says, that's not enough. We need to do something else. So whether it's a universal standard, which, yep, I think is much more attractive because, as you're, you're right, Richard, we cannot exclude manufactured homes. That was not jeopardized intent when we first surfaced this. And apparently, the mayor thinks that it deserves some special attention because she's the one who told us that the city council is actually in agreement, that they want the planning commission to come up with something to deal with manufactured homes. They didn't tell us to come up with universal building design standards. The words from the mayor were, "Design standards for manufactured homes."
If that's the case, then I think we need to go back to the mayor and basically tell her that from our research, we cannot single out manufactured homes, because that's what we're finding out. It's everywhere. I've looked at Olympia, I've looked at Tumwater, I've looked at Kennewick, I've looked at Blaine, and their manufactured home standards are exactly what ours are. The, you know, that's what we're, but it also references that it, they have to be conforming to the rest of the neighborhood or areas' design standards, which doesn't single manufactured homes out. It does, it's, it's included in it, but it's not just them, it's got to be all of it. And I think we've got to go back to the mayor and say, if we're going to do design standards, the only way we're going to be able to do it is to do it for all building, all residential, single-family home building. the only way we're going to be able to do it is to do it for all building, all residential, single family home building.
Let me, let me think of that. I, I don't think we need to go back to there because we go back where we come up with the design standard. It is, I think we just tell her, you could, we could not do this only for manufactured homes. We, we had to do it for everything. So I, I don't think we need to go back. We'll do what we need to do. Eleanor first?
You know, there, there's some standards that us seems to be, at least to me, special for manufactured homes. When I built this house, I couldn't have them sit my house on top of pilings. I had to dig a foundation or have a foundation dug. And that was a standard I had to meet. Why can manufactured homes avoid that standard? And I've watched them go up on our, on our walks where they're sitting on cement pylons and tied down. That doesn't seem to me to be a, a good way to try to make them attractive or bring them in line with the surrounding homes.
Hey, Richard?
So, um, I just had a thought as, as this discussion was going on. And I go back to my Frank Lloyd Wright analogy. And the city did have that situation come up about two years ago, where a woman wanted to put a very expensive, uh, house, uh, over, close to the, to the new bridge. I can't think of the name, Razor, on Razorclam. And there was a, 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 a hearing commission on that. I attended that, uh, and it lasted actually a couple of days. And the hearing commissioner, uh, turned down her, that, that home, that building request because it was not conforming. It, that, that building, uh, flagrantly was in excess of everything around the neighborhood. So I just throw that out, that, that when there is a non-conforming, whether it's too much or too little, when there's a non-conforming, uh, that, that there's a, can be a hearing examiner to say, does this fit the neighborhood? So there's a safe, there's a safety net in there that I didn't originally think about when I offered that analogy. I just wanted to throw that out for thought.
I think the use was non-conforming.
Right. I live, I, I, I live on that razor clam. And that issue had to do not with the design of the structure. It had to do with, as Eleanor said, the use of the structure. It was, uh, well, let's just, just put it this way. It was a multi-family type of, uh, uh, situation that was not consistent with the, the designated zone.
Okay, Tanya, next?
I, I kind of lost my train of thought there, but I think we all agree we need to make some design standards. And, and I want to make sure we're all aware, there's a difference between standards and guidelines. So standards are requirements that can be enforced. Guidelines are recommendations that are more open-ended. We can do both. And, um, we also need to avoid, avoid being vague. So we have a lot of room to, to make guidelines about, you know, must conform with the neighborhood, things like that, that are sort of open-ended, but they can't be so vague that they're uninterpretable or that they can be interpreted anyway. And, and Richard's right, you know, the idea of what conforms is kind of tricky in Ocean Shores where it's kind of been anything goes and everything has developed at different time periods. I mean, conforming in a brand new development is one thing, but here where everything is a little bit unique anyhow is, is tricky. So I think we need to really focus on what standards can we apply and what makes sense. Um, I think having a review committee is something other communities really have benefited from, especially, you know, when you look at our downtown area, a review committee could require specific types of facades. And I mean, it, it could be very, very different than what we have now. So I, I kind of think we need to do some research on communities that we all like, that we think aesthetically are pleasing, see what we can copy from them and also make a re- recommendation that we institute some kind of review committee. So I, I feel like that's kind of where I think our next steps are. Um, and I don't want to shortcut this discussion by any means, but before we all leave today, I'd like, if anyone has a, a town or a city that they want us to look into, please let me know.
Hey, Richard?
So, um, I, I agree with everything that Tanya just said. It mirrors some of my thoughts, uh, but I also want to go back to that house on Razorclam. And Greg is absolutely right. The big factors was, was its intended use. But my memory says that one of the things that that examiner made point of is that that house structure did not fit in with the rest of the houses on that street. Uh, so it was a minor point. I think the things that got that house, uh, uh, disapproved, uh, was that they were trying to, they weren't doing what they said they were doing and, and the examiner could see through the charade. So, anyway, I think that Tanya is correct. And, and I go back to an earlier comment. How do we find out, uh, how do we nail down what kind of parameters are acceptable for these design standards? And, and where do we go looking for that? And, and I'm, I'm, I'm at a loss and am hoping for some inspiration from one of the other people present here.
I think, I think it's important that we continue to try and search out, uh, some, but another entity that's done this, um, another city. And find, I've been, as we've been talking, I've been going through Google and trying to find an example. And I have a few, they, they, they don't 100% apply to it, nor will any of them because Ocean Shores is fairly unique, but at least it would give us this kind of a template that we can start with. And, um, it'd be nice to have, uh, somebody that's got a document that's already been built. And then we can modify it for, for what Ocean Shores is. But, uh, there are a couple of them out there that, uh, that are pretty comprehensive. And what I'll do is I will send you guys an email with a couple of examples. And then maybe that would give us a jump off point to dissect those things and then come up with our own document.
Comments? Okay, you guys who, uh, are the lead on this, what do we do now? Daniel, Greg?
Well, I think Pat just, um, proposed something. And then, and that, that's where, between what him and, uh, Tanya just said, we need to explore what other communities have done, bring those examples to the planning commission and explore what Tanya has brought up in terms of these design review committees. Because, well, one, it keeps coming up. It keeps coming up when we talk about how do we want Ocean Shores to better be able to market itself? And like I said before, I hope eventually we get into talking about downtown revitalization. And so as much as I don't like the concept necessarily about having design review committees, maybe that's where we're at. We just keep getting into this kind of, um, uh, subjective review. And yet, as Tanya has pointed out, it can't be subjective. It's got to have some teeth or some measurable criteria. So, uh, let's see what Pat comes up with in terms of, uh, examples from other communities. And I hate to dump on you guys because I am going to leave town. But maybe Tanya can come up with some design, uh, review committee types of, uh, situations in other communities that seems to be working. And look at, what do they do when it comes to, um, aesthetic things like vegetation, aesthetic things like, uh, housing design, aesthetic things like, what the, you know, you know, is a grocery, or not a grocery outlet, a dollar store the best thing you can do for the entrance to Ocean Shores? And that's facetious, of course, because the damage is done. I mean, I'm glad to have the store, but I don't think it should be at entrance of Ocean Shores. Eventually, this community has got to get to the point where they value what we have and we attract investors who will help us completely build out, uh, to help bear the burden of the, I don't know how many hundreds of miles of roads and pipes and sewers and water systems that are already in, that is painful for the 6,000 residents that live here right now to shoulder.
Let me, let me address one of the things that Greg keeps bringing up with the design review panel or whatever you want to call it. I think our charge is to come up with design standards and these recommendations for all housing. And if we need to branch off and specifically have some things about, uh, modular homes, we, we do that. Then we, if, if we think that that review committee is worthwhile, the only thing we can do is recommend it to the city. And then the city has to decide, the council has to decide, or the mayor, I know who knew that. If that, they want that. So, um, we could surely put that in our recommendation once we come up with a design standard. But, um, I, 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 I don't think we need to talk about it much anymore. So, anybody else? Richard?
Well, let me, let me add something, Dan. We put, we put, we put that in the, in the comprehensive plan. We have recommended that we have, I think we used the words, architectural design review committee. But we have made that recommendation in the comprehensive plan. So let's, let's not try to get into a endless do loop here. What we really need is the city council to approve the comp plan. And then we need to move on it. And in that comp plan, it says, we should consider, the city council should consider the establishment of a design review.
Yeah, I agree with you, Greg. We, we said consider. And, and that's all we, we'll do when we pass it on to the, to the mayor, consider. But until they pass the plan, that may even get taken out. They, they, they took quite a bit on dark skies last night, put back in something on dark skies. But they, they, they are going through section by section and, uh, section three on land use didn't get, they, they want to review it again because there's some people upset about the dark skies. That's, that's just how it goes. Anybody else, Richard?
I, I have two quick points. And first, uh, I heard Pat say that he was volunteering to, to look up some ordinances. And I remember a city up in, close to the border, Linden, Washington. And they have some, some very restrictive, uh, um, guidelines, uh, our, our ordinances. And so as you're looking, I invite you to take a look at that and see if their ordinance might apply to our endeavor, Linden, Washington, L Y D E N, I think it's spelled. Uh, and then the other thing that I want to say is, is, uh, my wife and I are fully retired and therefore on a fixed income. And it's my fear that if Greg's vision is fully, uh, comes to pass, Alex and I'll be taxed right out of the city. Uh, and that doesn't make me very happy. So, so, so I just throw that out as, as is, is if our goal is to maximize property value, are we serving, uh, are we equitably serving the needs of our senior population?
I don't think that.
Well, since you've, since you brought it up, um, think about it this way, Richard. The infrastructure is in place. It's been in place since the late sixties when the whole peninsula was developed. And that infrastructure costs a lot of money. And right now, the burden of that, that infrastructure is being borne by less than two-thirds of the population or the buildable lots. So it's not to increase your property values, it's to spread the burden over a larger number of people. That's the way I look at it. I don't want my property taxes to go up any more than you do. But I do want to reduce the number of LIDs and that come down on the shoulders of the, the, the people who own property here today. I want to spread that, that burden over the entire built-out, design that was put forth in the late sixties when Ocean Shores was developed.
I agree.
Richard?
And I just, Greg, thank you. You hit, you summarized that well. I agree 100% with everything you just said. And, and I recognized a few years ago, the need to get more tax-paying properties built out to spread out that infrastructure cost. And, and I appreciate your clarifying. The focus is to get more houses, more residents in the city, not to make a million dollars selling my house. All right, thanks for your clarification.
Anybody else? Tanya?
I just want to say that I think those are two separate things that got a little bit confused. We do want to preserve property values. We want people to feel comfortable that when they buy a lot here, that they know what they're buying and what they're getting. There's, it's a bit of a roll the dice right now. If you buy a property with a vacant lot next door, you don't know, you have no guarantee what, what could move in next to you, right? So we want people to have some certainty. And the idea of a fully built out is relevant regardless of property values, right? If, if the goal is simply to build out, we could build anything. So they're, they're kind of two separate issues, which I don't think is important right now for this conversation. I just want to make sure we're not confusing things.
So I found, um, Linden, Washington's design standards. It's actually quite thorough. Um, I'm going to send it to you guys right now.
Anybody else?
Other than Linden, do, does anyone have a city that they recommend? I mean, I don't know what Bend is all about, but they, Bend is beautiful. You know, it's such a great area and it's being developed very nicely. It's Oregon, so it's a little different, but.
Give, um, give that, that document that I just sent out to everybody, read and see what, uh, if that isn't a good start.
Awesome.
Actually really thorough.
That sounds like a place to start. Anything else on this?
I don't think so.
So I think everybody read with Linden's thing. And we'll discuss it next meeting. I don't have anything else on future planning commission project. The mayor hasn't given us anything. I, I think this is going to take us a while. And, but I'd like to, you know, maybe I'll push it out to the mayor and see our next shot would be a basement. As, as I've said numerous times, I got, you know, design standards are one thing and you get some stuff that houses that are. houses that are falling down and house, two houses for me been gutted for over 10 years. It's right on the way. Part of the, part of the house was ripped off. They put plywood over it now, plywood is all burned in black. And it's just a disgrace to the community. And so that's an area I'd like to see. So this is the only one, this is just one new roof. And I think Eleanor mentioned one, it's by a park where the windows are boarded up. But maybe that could be a future uh ask for us. I don't know where, where the mayor is gonna have us on that. Think how we have some extra time. I will take public comment again. I have to remind everybody, three minutes. I'll time you. And if I say, I'll warn you 30 seconds, I'll say time's up. Please stop at that point. So is there any public comment?
Dan Reese, do you have a public comment?
Uh, I didn't, but if you're asking about cities to look at, um, I know that uh, both, I think it's Bremerton and Bainbridge have been looking at some of the same similar uh ordinances regarding manufactured homes and um attached or detached additional dwellings on single lots and that kind of thing. So those might be some comparatives that we would consider as far as the manufactured home standard goes.
Thank you. Don Williams, do you have a public comment?
Nothing here, thank you.
Thank you. Marlene Penry?
No.
Hmm, that is the end of it.
Okay, uh, for the next planning commission meeting, uh, Mr. Hartman will be our note taker. Do I have a motion to adjourn?
Well, before we adjourn, I'd like your permission to, to be excused from the next meeting.
Oh, noted.
So I move adjournment.
Have a second?
I second.
Okay, thanks, everybody. Please read
Thank you.